Hi, welcome to the October 22 Fort Mill Town Council Meeting. Please, if you have a phone, put it on silent so that we and you can give up our full attention to one another. We appreciate you attending tonight. If you're here and need to speak, you should have by this point signed in to speak. Do we have anyone signed in to present? Can I have that list, please? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I should have picked it up on my way by. Alrighty. Okay. With that, if everyone will please stand, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance and Ronny will lead us in our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for another day you've given us. We thank you for the many blessings of life. We pray, Lord, to you, give us the wisdom to conduct the town's business and we give you the praise and honor and glory for it all. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, council, you have the minutes of the September 26 special called meeting and the minutes of the October 8 Town Council Meeting. Will there be any changes, additions, or deletions?
Hearing none, approve.
Okay, I've got a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. Public comment pursuant to Section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any resident may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign the public comment sheet prior to the start of the meeting. We have two of those. Please note in regards each person should have three minutes. You will need to stand at the podium and address council. So Hunter, would you like to go first?
Sure.
Okay. And Hunter, you'll need to state your name and your address.
I'm Hunter Newton. I live at 723 North Confederate Avenue in Rock Hill, South Carolina. I am co-owner and operator of KiBiKiBi Food Truck. We've been up and running for about four months now, out behind Amore Artist Brewery, our brewing company, operating under the ordinance that the council put in place about seven months ago, so Thursday through Sunday, under the specific hours. We're really happy that this is actually being addressed because, you know, being new business owners in an industry that's been growing for a long time now but is relatively new to especially smaller towns and areas, it's nice to be a part of that. But the two specific points I wanted to address were under the Section 8.4.
8.4?
Yes.
Okay.
Subsection B for mobile food vendors and then 2 for operational requirements. So it'd be E and F that I wanted to address.
Okay.
E states that operations shall not reduce the required for parking area for any other use on the lot. And I wasn't really clear, that wasn't specifically clear to me what that meant. And then the other one, most importantly for us, is operations shall not be at least 200 feet from any restaurant, which would obviously directly affect our business being that there are now two at least and then another one coming in. Our concern with that really is that being, having a relationship with the owners of each of those establishments, you know, they've both all expressed that, you know, our being there is not, doesn't have any negative effect on them but rather continues to bring business into this area, which, you know, I saw for five years at Local Dish when hobos came in, more people started coming in, we were getting busier when Amore opened, same thing, and now Southern Sugar's there and I'm sure we'll see the same with the improper pig as well. That's just the points I wanted to make.
Okay. Have you spoken with our planner?
Yes.
Pettit?
We did when we were getting started and at that point, we were still kind of going through the, what was it, the temporary ordinance that was set up. So I guess the next thing that we would like to do is kind of, obviously, this is something that you guys are working on, but there are some little changes that we would, that are concerning for us and that we would like.
And Hunter, I will tell you, it seems like eons that we started the work on the UDO.
Yeah.
It has been a very comprehensive and complex process because we were taking ordinances that had been here nearly as long as the town has. And some of them weren't even possible, much less current.
Yeah.
So as we look at the UDO and each council member gets to look at it, it's great to have the comments. Thank you for taking your time to come and speak to that. Mr. Pettit will give us those comments and we will work through the very best we can.
Okay.
The vitality of downtown hasn't been this good.
Yeah.
Since, God, I was a kid.
It's kind of amazing.
Yeah, it is amazing and it is wonderful and we're all very, very happy about it. Our job is hard sometimes because we have to make sure everyone is equally served and that there's a set of rules that everybody plays by. So we will definitely take those concerns into consideration as we move forward. We have not fully approved the UDO and all of those ordinances will be living, breathing, moving forward. We won't wait 100 years to review them. So first, thank you. I've heard many good things about the truck. I've actually had people from TDK tell me they drive down here to get pickup.
Yeah.
So that's a good thing. Thank you for what you're doing and we appreciate that and for coming before us. We will take it into consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, if you would, just for the purposes of record, state your name and address.
My name is Joseph Shadagas. My address is 710 Sunland Drive in Fort Mill.
Yes, sir.
And I'm here today just to bring up the dialogue on starting maybe, you know, a ban on plastic bags, maybe not all out banned right away, but maybe starting off with maybe some signs in the stores that say, hey, the town of Fort Mill does not, you know, recognize bags as a viable source. You know, Fort Mill has been one of the top economies in the state for the last, God knows how many years. And why can't we be a forerunner in this? South Carolina is one of the very few states that has no plastic regulations at all, you know. North Carolina and the Outer Banks, they do have the NC 2010 SB bill, which, you know, regulates how much plastic bags, you know, stores can give out and they do put a, you know, five cent charge per bag.
Mm-hmm.
And this in my travels over the past couple of years, the world is going, getting really dirty really fast.
It is.
And we're getting, reaching a point of no return. So I just was hoping maybe we can open the dialogue and get Fort Mill as a forerunner in this situation.
I think that's certainly something that we've all talked about, actually. We do need to take those steps and, you know, we don't need to wait on the rest of the world. We need to decide what's, what's right and good. And I grew up without plastic bags. They had paper bags, which are biodegradable.
Yes.
So I think certainly, you know, we can take that up as an item for discussion.
Well, I have talked into the City Council of San Francisco and they are willing to back your counsel here as well with any steps that, you know, help along the way that you would need.
Thank you for caring about our town.
Yes, ma'am.
I certainly appreciate it. And if you can get, we can get this passed and you get people quit throwing stuff out their windows.
Oh, really?
I'll be unhappy girl. I clean up my road every morning when I walk the dog.
Yeah, I pick up bags all the time with me when I walk.
And then there is trade, stop sign.
Yes, terrible.
I don't know. It's a mess, but thank you for caring.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
And coming before us, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hammonds.
You're welcome.
All right, no further folks signed up for comment. We'll move forward with our public hearing. Public hearing number one, an ordinance adopting a unified development ordinance and a new zoning map for the town of Fort Mill, repealing the current zoning ordinance, repealing conflicting provisions within the Code of Ordinances and other matters relating thereto. We'll open the public hearing. No one to make a comment. We're going to close.
Chris, I want to make one comment that I've just noticed, not necessarily that has to be changed before we do anything, but particularly in Massey, as I'm driving through, we've got some directions, a four-way intersection where two ways have stop signs, the other two are drive-through, but you can't see the stop signs. I took a picture of it and I know what it is, is our tree plantings that we're requiring, which are great between the road and the sidewalk, but maybe we need to look at the distance where that first tree goes from the stop sign to then. So I've got a few pictures, if you'll remind me afterwards, I'll kind of show you what I'm talking about, but even pruning it isn't going to help with where the eye level is of it. And as many kids as we have riding around on bikes in our neighborhood, I know it can be pretty hazardous.
Tree is parked too, are the trees planted too close to the fire, to the stop sign?
To the stop sign, yeah.
Was it 15 feet for parking? 15, you're not allowed to park a car 15 feet within the stop sign? 30 feet both side, or 15, 15 on a fire hydrant?
Like 10 from a fire hydrant.
It's just, yeah, it's blocking at the stop sign.
I was just saying, we already have that in line, we can just grab that and throw that in there, any more trees that are planted, keep them 15 feet off of the.
I agree. Probably need to keep ourselves on, on that for future development agreements to make sure that we are not presenting a future problem. Okay. Hearing done, we're going to close the public hearing. We'll start with presentation number one, Employee of the Quarter Award to one of my favorite people, presented to Jakana Hester. Davy, would you like to do the honors?
I would. I'd like to ask Jakana to come in front of the room if she would. Mayor, this is always a happy moment.
Oh, isn't it though?
For the town of Fort Mill. On a quarterly basis, our town employees nominate, they write letters in favor of employees that have gone above and beyond what they're asked to do, always pleasant to the public, promoting the town of Fort Mill. And for this quarter, Jakana was selected as our employee of the quarter and I'd like to, before I present her with this, I'd like to read a few of the comments that were turned in on her. All right. First off, Jakana is professional and polite to all that come into the office. She goes out of her way to help customers and her coworkers. She is a delight to work with and always participates in all activities of the town. Another is Jakana is a great candidate for employee of the quarter. She is kind and patient with citizens and others who visit the town, Fort Mill Town Hall. Additionally, she is always ready to assist town staff with their task. It is evident that she performs her duties with a great attitude. And I could not say it any better than either one of those. Her professionalism, her personality, it resonates throughout Town Hall. To sum it up, Jakana is a wonderful ambassador for the town of Fort Mill. So with that, I present you with.
I'd like to thank you. Please get a picture.
For your newsletter.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I think it's so important when you come into a business, the first person you see will set the tone for how your experience might go. We couldn't have gotten anybody any better to be the first person that everyone sees when they come to the Town Hall. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate you. All right, presentation number two, quarterly financial update, which will be just as happy, Shante.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. First, let me apologize that these were not available to be loaded on your iPads before the meeting, but they will be tomorrow. Just wanted to give you a little snapshot through the end of September. Of course, these are unaudited numbers and we continue to post to the September year end process. But I did just want to let you know where we stood right now from an actual perspective. For some of our major funds, our general fund, we've actually collected in revenues $20,103,000 and we've expensed $19,480,000, which makes us to the good of about $622,000 right now. For our gross revenue fund, we've collected $12,713,000 and expensed $800,268,000, which gives us a favorable outcome right now of $4,445,000. I just want to say that a good bit of that revenue from the utility fund, the gross revenue fund, is coming from water taps, sewer taps, and the TDK water sales. It's what's boosting that revenue at this time. And of course, the expenditures are, our folks are being really good about not spending what they don't need to spend, but that's where we stand right now. And then in our stormwater fund, we collected $741,000 and have spent $444,000, which brings us to a favorable amount of $296,000. And then for our capital projects fund, we have received $5,463,000 and some of that is the 300, the $3,800,000 that we transferred in from the general fund per our fund balance policy. And also some of that is some revenues that were transferred in from our special revenue funds, impact fee funds, that were to help cover some of the expenditures that had been paid out concerning those funds. And if you'll recall, one of the biggest amounts that was transferred in came from our municipal facilities impact fee fund. If you'll recall, at one point, you all agreed to allow us to pay ourselves back for the purchase of this building. So that's where a good bit of that came from. And then with our hospitality tax funds, we did, did well there. We haven't spent anything out of that fund, but we have received $773,000, which is $123,000 up over budget. So that's where we stand right now with these unaudited numbers. Everything is shaping up. Looks like we've done well so far this year and we hope by the final numbers that we'll still be doing well.
Yay.
And one last thing that I wanted to mention to you, Tyler Technologies will be on site with us for the next couple of weeks, helping us to migrate from our legacy system to our new municipal financial system for Phase 1 of the project. And that's our entire general ledger budgeting process, our accounts payable system, and our purchase order system. So we're excited about that. We feel good about the outcome and so we're just looking forward to them being here with us the next couple of weeks.
Excellent, excellent. For all those watching or listening, these are new systems that we're so excited to put into place that will bring us a little bit closer to current day technologies and help us to serve our customers better.
Yes, ma'am.
And to do an even better job within our own sphere of, of work. So we're excited to get that done. Thank you, Shante. Any questions for Shante? Thank you so much.
Okay.
Alrighty. Now we'll begin with old business items. Old business item number one, second reading, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of waterworks and sewer system improvement revenue bonds for the town of Fort Mill, South Carolina to be designated Series 2018B and other matters relating thereto. Shante, you might as well just stay there. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept old business item number one.
Have a motion in a second.
Um, Mayor, this particular, I'm not sure how you all need to delay it, act on it, or however, but we had a group conference call on Friday and some of the numbers for this ordinance are going to change. So we need to delay this until your November 8, what?
12.
Your November 12th meeting.
Okay, it's not delay, what's the right term?
Defer.
Defer. Thank you. Can, I'll, I'll make a motion to defer this item until our November the 12th meeting.
I'll second that.
We have a second. Do we need to vote on the first one?
Mm-hmm.
I'm catching up, aren't I? Okay, we're going to have, the first one was to accept this item and with a motion to accept. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
On the second motion, to defer to the November 12th meeting, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We'll be back November the 12th.
There's hope for me yet. Okay.
Time's running out.
I know, tell me. New business items, new business item number one, a resolution accepting the streets in the River Chase subdivision into the town of Fort Mill Street Maintenance System. Word for Mr. Moody, our subject expert is Chris Pettit. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept new business item number one.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I've got a motion in a second. Christopher?
Mayor, this is a request by Meritage Homes for all of the streets in the River Chase subdivision. The streets have met the 75% build-out requirement. In fact, all of the homes in the River Chase subdivision have been completely built out and all construction has been finalized. So the application meets or exceeds the requirements of the street acceptance policy and staff would recommend in favor of approval.
Okay, we have a staff recommendation. We have a motion on the table to approve.
You said that all the home, I'm sorry.
No.
You said all the homes are built out, where, when are they planning on doing the final?
75%.
75%.
No, the road was 75%. I thought the houses were built.
The requirement is that at least 75% build out on the streets and there are no more homes to be constructed. All construction has been completed.
So no vacant lots, because I wrote down 75% for the project. I'm sorry.
It's 100% completed.
Okay.
And this, again, as we look at future projects and lessons learned, I'd like to address when you're pulling in that neighborhood, that very first stop sign you come to, it is so narrow trying to make right and left turns there, it's real difficult when traffic's coming in and going opposite directions during construction was a nightmare because of people parking on street, or anytime people are parking on streets, these streets just don't seem to be wide enough to handle the amount of traffic, both pedestrian traffic, bicycles and cars and construction. So while I understand we can't do anything at this point with this neighborhood, as we keep looking to new neighborhoods, let's see if we can do better next time.
Are those requirements that we have opportunity to express and change?
We do.
Or is it Department of Transportation? Where does that fall?
We, we determine our own design criteria.
Okay.
So we can't change that.
Okay, I totally agree that we have several developments with road systems that are far too narrow. I don't see how a fire truck could get down some of the streets in the newer developments. I really don't. It's, it's terrifying to me. So definitely want to take that into consideration, please. Okay. Hearing everything you have heard, we have a motion on the table to approve new business item number one and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you very much. New business item number two, a resolution amending the general use policies for the town of Fort Mill's parks and recreation facilities. Brown Simpson, this is your Bailey Wick. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept new business item number two.
And I have a motion in, do I have a second? I got a motion in a second. Brownie?
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. What we're asking you to do tonight is add two new rules to our parks and recreation facility uses that we post on our website, just so people are aware of those. And I think y'all have had an opportunity to look at those. It's just something, we've had some, some questions about fireworks are pretty simple. We've had that actually on our status for, I think, our ordinance is in the town, but not actually in the rules for our parks and everything. But the other one was use of drones, flying model vehicles, including but not limited to model airplanes, helicopters, and rockets, and any other unmanned aerial vehicles prohibited within the town park without approval from the Parks and Recreation Director. We're getting requests for this and we've got some concerns about this from a liability standpoint. So we're asking you to adopt this tonight. We've actually surveyed some of the other parks and recreation departments in the county and they all have these on their books. So we're just trying to protect in the long run the town with this. I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Number one, I'm shocked anybody asked first. Number two, how do we enforce that? I, I clearly hear it's going to be a reporting and we respond because we don't have enough folks to be constantly looking.
We've got, you know, we've got, yeah, we've got staff members here during the day, but also we have some on the weekends too. But we will be relying, if we have any of these that are brought to our attention, that people are violating the law, if y'all approve this, we'll be asking our police department to help us enforce these too. So looking back at Major Zachary back there.
Did we confer with the police department about these? Because obviously if they're on the books in other locations, they found a way to enforce it. Is that correct?
They have.
Okay, and, okay.
Would there be opportunities for exception? So I'm just thinking about the drones that are taking pictures.
For the strawberry festival.
Yeah, strawberry festival, large activities.
As long as they got approval from us to do that.
Okay.
We're, we're good with that.
Okay.
Our biggest concerns has been the model rockets and we've got, had requests for that and we, we.
Really?
Yes. And we've said no because we have concerns about it, you know, what happens if that thing?
Put somebody's eye out.
That's right, you know? And we just, we've got a lot of concerns about that. We just want to make sure we got it in the books where we can enforce it.
Yeah, you know, you can't regulate common sense, you know? It's kind of hard, isn't it?
No substitute either.
No. Counsel, further questions? They seem very reasonable requests. Certainly, we'll see how it goes, but have a motion on the table in a second. Any further questions? No further questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alrighty, new business item number three, a resolution to appoint and commission Alex Moore as a code enforcement officer for the proper security and general welfare for the town of Fort Mill. Can I do all these together since we have multiples? New business item number four, we will be doing the same for LeAnn Clark and for Matt Kennedy and new business item number five. And new business item number six, Christopher James. And I believe that's the whole. Do we have all of those folks here? No? Okay, they don't need to be here. Okay.
I'll make a motion, we accept new business items three, four, five, and six.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you very much. New business item number seven, this is the fun one. Approval needed for design options from Kekon Wood on amphitheater and restroom facilities for Walter Elijah Park and restroom facilities for Calhoun Park. Manager Broome will be helping us with any information in regards. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept new business item number seven.
Okay.
Second.
Motion in a second. Let's, let's talk.
Thank you, Mayor. The Parks Recreation Committee met this past Thursday out at Walter Elijah Park, did a site visit, met with architect that presented us with three different diagrams or options for the amphitheater itself. During the discussions, there was, you know, we shared our thoughts as council members and manager thoughts, but from that discussion, he went back to the drawing board and kind of added and moved the amphitheater, theater around from the original location. What you have before you is his completed design. I would like for you to kind of look it over, share any feedback that we may, that you may have for us to go back and add or subtract, but if you look at the drawing and Chris, is there, could we get that?
Sure.
Okay, council, while we're pulling that up, many of us have had an opportunity to either walk the park and look at the location and the improvements that we've been anxiously awaiting. Kekon Wood is the entity that's helping us with the architecture and design. We have several choices available to us based on our input to date and suggestions made by Kekon Wood. So I, for one, am just extremely excited as we are beginning to get closer and closer to actually seeing somebody with a shovel out in the park. I'm real excited about that. So if we could take it a step at a time, everybody satisfied with the turning of the amphitheater slightly to ensure that we have adequate space for the construction of the facility and optimum performance of the facility. Everybody satisfied?
Yeah, I thought that's what it was going to go to start with.
Okay. Secondarily, let's take a look at the three options for the structure itself. We have option A at the top, option B in the middle, and option C on the bottom in the left-hand corner, the colored pictures. I guess the right way to do this is show of hands. Does everybody have a chance to look at? Does everybody have a chance to look at?
Yeah, and as, as we're talking before we start to vote on it, but I can comment on the, uh, model A that was discussed out there, a couple of minor changes. Again, um, one of the things from all the discussions we had with them is there will be minor changes to these as we get to the site. So, we're conceptually looking at the plan and the overall look. But A, he said that these, um, poles that are coming out of the top of the roof, he would not recommend doing that. He would have them stopped at the roof line because that adds to a hole that comes through, right, Davy?
Right.
And can add to water potentially coming in and seeping through. So, there would be a change on that, um, if we went with that one. The other part is he said the columns down below are pretty wide and they're tapered downward. We would do a more narrow, straight column on that rather than coming outward.
We're just looking at concept.
Yep.
And final product, we'll get another view. Uh, one of the issues that is important to me as we select between these three is I believe Jamie was able to determine that number one is produced here in South Carolina.
South Carolina product.
We wouldn't, it's a product of South Carolina. That's important to me. And I like the shape of it, the natural, for everyone that's here, we're looking for something to blend in and complement the park without that being the first thing you see. You know, we want to maintain the natural look of the park. So, we weren't really looking for, you know, big shiny mirror balls and things like that. We were more interested in something that would complement.
People may drive by and say, oh, wow, that's a great looking, oh, and they got an amphitheater in the back instead of, what the heck is that in the back of the park?
Yeah.
You know, we want, we try to get it to be a second thought as opposed to the first thing that you jump in on.
But Lisa, Councilman Cook is correct. Um, each of these are renderings for us to select a style and then they will be tailored to fit our needs and what will be approved by the Historic Review Committee, um, so, and our Planning Division. So, this is just to try to get, um, a perspective from council to move forward with a particular style. So, um, A, B or C, let's start at the bottom. Show of hands for C. I see no show of hands for C. Uh, show of hands for B. No show of hands for B. Guess what? Does everybody like A?
Yes.
I like A. All right. We have chosen an option, Mr. Manager. Now, we're going to look at the restrooms for the same thing. We did ask Kekin Wood to, um, install water fountains and I believe what I can see in them, um, in the option A, B and C, there appears to be something that looks like a water fountain.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, option C, show of hands? None? Option B, show of hands?
No.
Got one? And then option A. All right. So, we have chosen option A for both the style of the amphitheater and for the restroom. Okay?
About the other bathroom, other restroom.
No, it'll mimic?
It'll be the similar style. Remember, we're not choosing just build-
Only reason I, only reason I picked B is because of the upkeep of the wood.
Mm-hmm.
Maintenance.
I just think the two-
Which maintenance, I mean?
Maintenance on the wood.
Yeah, I, I had looked at that myself.
Keeping it stained.
Okay, um, Davy, were we to look at the three lighting suggestions at the bottom as well?
I don't know that we're at the point, uh, of that yet.
Good, good.
What I would like to kind of add to this, as far as the, the location and, um, the, what they're projecting, if you, if you look, the restroom, the proposed restroom has been moved closer to the amphitheater from the original, um, thought process. Um, if you have an opportunity to go out tomorrow, uh, Kekin Wood has staked that area.
Oh, good.
Um, and it, it appears even closer than this diagram shows and it may not be able to-
I'm sorry, were we able to determine if there was a water line? You, we had spoken something about a water main going through there?
Yes, sir, and we, we located that for them today.
Excellent.
So, um, it is in very close proximity, so.
Excellent.
Yes.
This park was given to the town, donated to the town, um, more than a year ago and we have been very anxious to come together with decisions on how to best enhance its use for the public. And, uh, restrooms were top of our list, amphitheater was second, so that we can have larger venues and events, uh, for our community. So, if you can also see from a distance, we're looking at additional parking, additional lighting, some, uh, porch, porch type swings with the pergola, so people can sit and watch the kids play. So, we are, again, trying to complement the park rather than make it care wins south.
I do like what they've done on the turnaround for the parking. What they, I think we'll be able to fit in there and kind of one-way in the traffic and giving extra parking. That's awesome.
That's correct, Ms. Cook, and I, and I think that was your idea for that. And if you notice that the, the turnaround or cul-de-sac at the end of the parking lot that's now, that's there now is being removed.
Mm-hmm.
Not really sure what it's there for. It doesn't serve much of a purpose, but it'll be taken out. So, you've got a loading zone, uh, and that actually will add a few more parking spaces to that lower parking lot. Um, we have, with this diagram on top of the hill, um, adjacent to, uh, not sure if that's, I know Calhoun Park. Is that Looms Way maybe, Chris?
Yeah.
Yes. Um, where you have, and Lee Street, you've got additional parking up there, uh, for Calhoun Park and-
And we are adding a restroom up at Calhoun Park for the convenience of those that use that park as well. Um, we will do our level best at ensuring that these items are constructed in a time that we avoid, uh, as much of the strawberry festival timing as we can. Um, however, again, we're very anxious, uh, to get these in place for our community and pretty excited about it. So, uh, thanks to Kekin Wood and staff for the hard work. Brownie, you pleased with the decisions?
Yes.
That we're making? You like the ones we've chosen, the style?
Yes, ma'am.
Send you to Parkson Rex guy. Thank you.
Davy, when we look at Calhoun and the parking up there, uh, as we get a little bit closer to looking at flow, again, pulling in and out of Calhoun, a lot of times people don't know which end to go in. It's one-way direction, but people are coming in the opposite way.
Right.
So, just kind of the same thing as we've done at the bottom. Let's kind of look and see if we can get a one-way traffic pattern that makes some sense or, you know, curvings blocking off others.
We'll certainly do that.
Yeah, so that would be normal.
Yeah, I was half thinking we could even close off that little section of road. Right, right now that you have with the new design, there's three ways in. You close that little section there that heads towards the park and maybe even pick up a couple more spots at the bottom of that and then have a one-way in from the main street there and then a one-way out once you get past the bathrooms there. And we could even use that section, that section where the part of the road is, like, I know when we had the service guys with the strawberry festival, they have the big, um,
The bus?
The big bus, the rescue bus. We can put something like that up there or if there, we have an event, that can be auxiliary parking for if kids are coming in on a bus or-
That's true.
Or a band has a bus, they can park it up there and get it out of the way.
Awesome. It is awesome. Very, very excited. Hearing no further comments, everyone in favor of the decisions made, the motion on the table to accept, um, or give permission to move forward, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you very much. With that, uh, we have no information discussion items. Trudy, for the good of the whole, don't you tell a joke.
Are we on TV?
I'm, I'm not sitting in that seat in there.
I'm teasing. I'm only teasing. We miss Larry.
Um, if I may, I have a couple of questions I would like to ask.
Of course.
I had, um, when we had the advisory, um, the, the problem with the water, where we had to boil the water.
Yes, ma'am.
We had a question, um, from several of our residents. Those folks that do not have a computer, how were they notified or were they notified or is that something we need to talk about or think about?
Yes, ma'am, um, that's, we're always looking for ways to better, um, notify our residents and customers. Um, at this point, at this time, we do not have a, um, a, like a code red program where we can do dial-back, uh, reverse calling. We're working toward that and in the near, the near future, we will have something, uh, similar to that. We'll ask, uh, customers to sign up for that program and then we can, uh, if anything were to happen, uh, with water, boil water notices, um, or train derailments, you know, any, any emergencies, we can get a notification out to anyone that signed up that program, whether it's text, uh, or email, uh, or a phone call. So, yes, ma'am, we're working toward that. Uh, currently, we had to rely on our, um, our social media, the town's social media. We reached out all the, the local media outlets, um, for their help, um, and they did a really good job, um, promoting that for us. Problem was, uh, it was the timing of the, the event. It was at night. We weren't sure how much of Fort Mill, our water system had been affected. So, um, we took the safe route and notified all of our customers. Um, in hindsight, you know, if we had the ability to do a little bit better study that, at that time period, we could have narrowed it down to a-
Right.
Certain area, which we did as soon as possible the next morning. Um, but it was, you know, it's one of those issues where we would love for, uh, our water and sewer, uh, services to be available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Unfortunately, you have accidents, um,
And we didn't do it.
Right. This, this one was hit and, and we, you know, lines are hit quite often from, um, from contractors. This just happened to be a, a very-
A pretty big one.
It was a big line that was, it carried, it served the downtown area, so.
And I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but the, I had three different ladies that asked me and they were all notified, um, through the Facebook page, I guess it was. But, um, they had some elderly folks that did not know about it and that's what they were asking about, um, was that.
Yes, ma'am.
And then the other question that I have is, um, the house at the corner of Confederate Street and Monroe White Street, it used to be the Pfeiffer House. Um, and I, my understanding is that it was sold at one time and it was supposed to be some kind of a business and they went in and, um, they were going to do a lot of, um, I guess, construction or whatever with it and it looks really bad. Um, some of the folks that actually, some of the family have said something to me about it and, you know, that's where I used to live or that's where my grandmother lived, you know, and it's a shame that it's right here in downtown Fort Mill. Is there not anything we can do about it? So, I told them that I would ask and just see, you know, what the status is right now.
Yes, ma'am, and I don't have an answer on the status at this moment, but we can certainly look into it and I can get back with you on that.
Okay, okay.
I think something related to that, Trudy, um, there's a situation that's been brought to my attention by several people as well, where we have a home that's, um, undergoing some pretty extensive renovations and expansion and it's taking the homeowner quite a while. The current, I was surprised to find that we do not have any regulation that says they have to complete it in a certain time. They just have to hold the appropriate permits, maintain the site under construction, to construction guidelines and then they finish when they finish. So, there's no, you get a permit for two months and, you know, we, we check it. So, um, I've asked Christopher and, uh, our folks inside the house to take a look at that, um, and certainly, you know, we can go check. Christopher, do you know anything about the status of the house at Monroe and Confederate? Because I agree with Councilman Hemsaw.
I believe plans have been submitted. Um, I think it changed hands actually.
It did, a couple of times.
And I think it's, it's in plan review, um, so I think you should be seeing, uh, some activity hopefully shortly on, on that house.
Because, I mean, it is a very busy intersection. There's a lot of traffic that passes by there, um, every day.
And, and just keep in mind, when you speak to the ladies that spoke to you, there are many things that have come before us that it makes a lot of sense to come up with a law, uh, to regulate it. But it, the law to regulate it in some cases takes away the freedom of the, the light parking in your yard. There's some areas in town that's the only place people can park. So, you know, we have to be conscientious as we make decisions on restricting use of property to make sure they're within the law and that it is prudent, you know, for the person that owns the land. I don't like looking at it, can't lie to you. I don't like looking at it at all. Um, but as a council, you know, we will have to set that tone and decide, um, where we, where we want to go with that. How do we want to manage that?
And I was, um, called over on Short Link Street about six or eight months ago. In fact, Davy and I had a conversation about that. And part of, uh, my trip over there was about people parking in the yard and being out into the sidewalk. Um, but it's like Davy and I discussed, at the time that those homes were built over there, people were walking back and forth to the mills. They didn't even have a car. So, they didn't even need a driveway at that particular time.
Well, I look at a lot of, to Lisa's point, I look at a lot of the new construction and they're building close enough to the street that if you park a car of any size or suburban or an SUV on the driveway, you're hanging out on the sidewalk. You know, so I, I'd like for us to take a long look at that. I do.
Miss Hemsaw, just as a side note to that, you know, we met, we did discuss about, uh, Link Street and Short Link. Have you been over there recently? Um, we've done renovations to Short Lake, where, uh, Short Lake, uh, Link enters into Link Street itself. Um, we, we flared the, uh, apron.
Okay, I have not, no, I have not been over there recently.
And did some sidewalk repairs, so it should be, I have not heard any complaints regarding that. I think it, it enhanced the area and it's worked really well for everyone, I believe.
I know that the gentleman had sold his house, that was trying to sell his house back up there, so, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Moody?
So, you get all the calls about the houses. My, my main calls come when people's waters disconnected on a Friday afternoon. They come ring the doorbell, say, call Davy. No, I'm just kidding. I give them the after-hours. Here's Davy's home number. I give them the after-hours.
Please don't do that.
Page your number and then, you know, they're happy. But, uh, all the scarecrows on Main, it's pretty cool seeing a lot of, man, there's people out there everywhere. Um, every time I'm riding through town, you see a lot of people out walking, checking those out. They're pretty neat. Had a good time at the fire department, uh, open house. Had a pretty cool demo when they built two mock bedrooms and one had a sprinkler system and they burned them both and the other one didn't. So, I thought that was pretty neat and had a good, man, how many pizzas did y'all serve that day?
Hundred and seventy.
Hundred and seventy pizzas.
That's crazy good.
Yeah, yeah, there were a lot, there was a lot of people out there. So, we got an election coming up, November sixth, uh, school board, house representatives, um, county council. I think we've got a candidate in the back.
We do.
Mr. Hamilton.
We do.
Thank you for being here.
Hello, Ms. Hamilton.
He's actually been here more than once.
Yeah.
Isn't that a good thing? And some of our events too.
So, um, anyway, get, get out and vote. Our turnout's horrible in Fort Mill, so. Let's try to get to ten percent sometime around here, so that's, that's about all I have, so.
Be happy if we got to two percent.
Yeah.
Ronnie?
He took my thunder.
Oh, he did?
Main Street looking spooky.
Spooky?
Just looking, what, Ronnie?
Spooky.
Spooky. Thought you were going to say spiffy.
But it looks good.
It does.
Yeah, it's very good.
All of them look good.
Yeah, everything looks good.
Good participation.
Excellent, excellent. Lisa?
So, something was brought up, um, with some of my neighbors is the hundred and ninety-four acres on Dobie's Bridge Road that has just recently gone up for sale.
I've been hearing about it too.
Um, and for clarification, uh, is that in the town or not in the town limits?
My understanding is it's a property not in the town limits.
Okay, just verifying.
So, if people want to express their opinion about how that land is developed, if and when it is sold, they should reach out to their local county council people?
Correct.
Have we been approached yet about, you know, application for annexation or anything?
Okay.
So, right now it sits with the county's hands.
Correct.
Thank you for clarifying. That is my only-
That yours? All right. When we, uh, do have properties, there are still tracts of land, believe it or not, that have not been built on in Fort Mill. Hard to believe, but there are. And there's several larger tracts down that way. And we've had developers before us and we've had developers fade away and new ones come in. So, don't for a minute believe that it's completely built out even though it feels like it. Excuse me. Uh, one of the things I'd like to bring to the table are some recent, uh, meetings we've had on transportation. I have been privileged and honored to sit with some of the larger business owners up in the, uh, west of I-77 as they are trying to get word to the state to help us, um, with some changes on one sixty. Just when it's my turn, right? Sorry. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. We certainly have seen some movement to fund the interchanges at both Gold Hill and 160 on I-77. I know, isn't that awful? But in the interim, because that is a process that takes some time, we are looking at some restrictions on left-hand turns that back up traffic westward, should've been done a long time ago. We're looking at some changes to the frequency in which the lights, the red lights change. We're looking at even a possibility of an additional lane coming off of I-77. So there is movement, discussion, and a lot of effort. I know it doesn't seem like it, but these are not changes that happen quickly, but there's a lot of interested parties and a lot of good people at the table, so I'm, I'm very proud of everything north of the river trying to come together to resolve an issue that we all experience. So I think that's certainly for the good of the whole. I'd like to thank the guys for removing the juniper in the island at Business 21 and 160 across from the park. It doesn't look like a snake pit anymore and you can actually see oncoming traffic, that's kinda cool. I heartily and resoundingly say the scarecrows are one of the most fun parts of the fall. The town looks beautiful and we're so proud of it. Seventy-two, is that right? Seventy-two scarecrows? Seventy-four? Excellent, just wonderful, it just grows every year, lot of fun. We have our Halloween event coming up on Halloween downtown to provide a safe atmosphere for families and their children or anyone to come. It's a lot of fun to see the creativity, if you think the scarecrows are creative, God, if you come see some of those costumes. My mom got by easy, you know? I'm old, we didn't have costumes like that. So by all means, you know, you're, please feel free to join us. I'd like to thank Tony McMan, you never see him on camera, but if you see us, you're seeing his work. Tony does a great job of covering every event for the town and then some. He helps us with the videography needed to do what we do on Facebook and our website and on our TV channel and it's a good way to reach our, our audience that can't be here when we are. So with that. Jamie?
Can I say something?
No. Did I miss you? That was very rude.
That's okay.
Can I apologize heartily?
That's fine, I understand.
I missed Jamie, I'm sorry.
Save the best for last, didn't you, Ronnie?
Yeah.
I just wanted to, on the bottom of South White before it gets to Canala, I know, I saw that there was a cut in the road, but if you stand on that cut and jump up and down, water comes up out of there, so I don't know if we still have a line that's broke.
Yeah, really.
Cause that's what I do.
You go jump up and down in the road?
I like to be involved with this happening in the town, but yeah, if we can have somebody go over there and look, make sure, it might've just been water that collected underneath that new, new part that they put in, but in case that line's still broke and we can fix that. I wanna thank everybody, gentlemen and the people that came out and spoke on the UDO. It is like a spider web, we pull one string and it affects parts that we don't know, so unless the public comes out and tells us what's going on, then we're not gonna be aware of it. It's such a juggernaut of a piece of legislation that we're trying to get through here, so I greatly appreciate you coming out and bringing things that directly affect you guys. Halloween's coming up, please be safe, kids are gonna be out, if you are, have children or your kids are going out on their, old enough to go on their own like mine unfortunately, make sure they have reflective bracelets or necklaces or something so everybody can see them. I think the mad scientist is my favorite scarecrow up there with the smoke coming out of the beaker, that's pretty neat. That was very, that was very inventive. It was a great time of the week at the fire department, open house. Unofficial numbers I got were, last year was 600, this year was 1,400 people came through there.
Yay.
More information coming, that's a 600 increase from the prior year. And the clubs that support the fire department, I know that they wanna expand on things that they're doing, the kids had an absolute blast, I had a blast, you don't have to be a kid to go and have fun, everybody loves big trucks, everybody wants to shoot the hoses, I highly recommend, and just going and thanking those guys for, I mean, that's a thankless job. I mean, while everybody's running from danger, they're running to it, so my hat's off to them and the police also, I mean, all of our staff are, are great. And then last but not least, November 6th, please go out and vote, it's your civic duty and if you don't like how things are moving, that's your time to voice it. If you like how things are moving, that's your time to voice it, so please go out, that's all.
Yeah. Lastly, as you brought up Halloween, I'd like to say too, with the time not changing until November the 4th, it gets dark pretty quickly now and my husband and I were riding up 160 one night this week and cyclists, even though they have the little flashing thing on the back of the bike, if you don't have, if you have on dark clothes and the bike's dark, you don't really see them and if you're out there in the middle of the road at oncoming traffic, if you're riding a bike, you have to follow the same rules as anybody in, in a car. You, you can't get out in oncoming traffic and expect people to see you quickly, so for your own safety, you know, I, I care about cyclists having the opportunity to ride our streets, but you must follow the rules to protect yourself and others because it would've been heartbreaking to hit somebody. So with the, with it being dark pretty quick, please be careful, please be careful. Nothing more? Did I miss anybody else? Alright, with that all, we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Got a motion in a second? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed, nay. Thank you for coming.